I'd like to call the order, the Hatfield Township Workshop Meeting for March 12, 2025. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lestrako.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here. I'd like to ask Vice President Rogers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus, second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or comments with regard to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments of agenda items? Okay, nobody's running up to the podium. We will move on to our consent items. Is there a motion to move the consent items into the record?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestrako.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrus. Those items, the consent items include the police report for the month of February, the VMSC monthly report for the month of February, the Kalmer Volunteer Fire Company monthly report for the month of February, and the HTMA meeting minutes for January 14, 2025. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are moved into the record. We are going to jump quickly into our committee reports. First is Planning and Zoning Committee, Vice President Rogers.
Thank you. The first item is the Corner Brook Land Development Consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Vice President. Commissioners, you remember the last meeting, we had a presentation from the Corner Brook team regarding this project. We have representatives here tonight. We also do have a signed resolution from the applicant. So tonight, it is on the agenda for consideration despite the purple flashing up there. But I don't know if anybody would like to come up to just give a quick overview again of the project to remind the commissioners from the team?
I certainly can.
If you don't mind, just a brief overview, and I have some aerials as well to refresh everyone's memory.
Please, and it's also not just commissioners, but also residents and they, those that are here, but also we have this on TV, so people will be able to see it, you know, at the different meetings.
We'll need you to come to the podium, so you can be heard. Yep, please, thanks.
Good evening, Julie Bernstein. I'm with Kaplan Stewart. So we represent Corner Brook LLC. They're the owner and applicant. They're requesting preliminary and final land development approval for a project at the property of 958 Old Bethlehem Pike. This is at the corner of Line Lexington Road and Old Bethlehem Pike. As you can see, it's kind of this corner property that's very kind of irregularly shaped. Currently, as it exists, has kind of in the upper right-hand corner what originally was a house, but I think previously was used as nursery school. It's vacant right now. And then sort of at the top in the middle, there's a little tiny kind of bump out into the right-of-way, which is a pretty dilapidated building. That was a garage with an apartment above it. And so Corner Brook is proposing to demolish that sort of dilapidated building and then convert the other existing building on the property into three apartments and build a new apartment-style, a low-rise apartment building for 10 apartments, which is this kind of gray box towards the south, along with associated parking spaces, two kind of full-access driveway ingress and egress out to each of the driveway axes, and then providing stormwater improvements and sort of outdoor communal area sort of towards the left of the property where there's a stormwater basin, kind of an area for people to sit. And so this has gone through kind of multiple levels of reviews. It's been checked out by the fire marshal, the township engineer, and traffic. They're also doing some improvements at the corner. The intersection historically has had some issues, so to say, and so we're improving it and kind of making a much nicer curve around the corner. And just like a lot of improvements, there's going to be sidewalks along the front and kind of towards the edge, and it just really is going to like green up. There's a really significant landscaping proposal associated with this, so it's going to green up the property and make it look a lot nicer going forward. And we're here tonight seeking a vote for approval of this preliminary final plan. There are a series of waivers. I believe you guys went through them at the last meeting, so I can do that if you need to, but.
Maybe if someone asks, but I was interested to hear again, and I think Vice President Rogers mentioned access points to the property. If you can point those out to us and what the new access points would look like.
So you can see kind of just on the north side of the property, there is from Line Lexington Road, or sorry, there is a pointer. If you go to the pointer to the right, there's a full driveway access. This kind of will curve around to parking areas, and then there's a secondary full access. Oh, you're giving me the pointer. That's helpful. Yeah, so this is kind of the first access. It's a full access in and out onto Line Lexington Road. And then here we have parking. This is the 10-apartment unit building. And then there's additional parking here, and this is the secondary access onto Old Bethlehem that will go in and out. There is again kind of curbing and sidewalk to here. It will go in.
The building at the edge of the, not the newly construction, yeah, that will remain.
That will remain, and it's being converted to provide for three apartment units.
And parking is really on both sides, kind of surrounds, other than the basin over and to the left of it, it surrounds the new, the proposed new entity, right?
So this is one kind of parking area, and this is another parking area. I believe I should double-check. I think it's 33 spaces?
Thirty-three? Is that what it is?
Correct.
So the building on the corner is already occupied, correct?
This one right here?
Yeah.
I don't believe it is.
Yeah, there's apartments there, right? So it's not being really converted.
It seems you're rehabbing.
Rehab.
So with the parking that we were looking at, the 33 spots, is that going to cover both the new construction and the existing building that are going to be rehabbed? Okay.
I'll do the math for you. There's seven extra spaces with two cars per house.
That's exactly what I was trying to do. He's a lawyer. He's an engineer. He's doing the math. I'm just trying to figure out what the issue is. Okay. And access points is, both access points are in and out at both points, right?
They are, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments? I know we went through this before, but for anyone who hasn't been here or didn't see the last meeting. Okay.
And I guess we, our traffic engineer already reviewed this. I'm just concerned about the cutting through on the.
309.
Yeah, and like I said last time, we didn't feel like there was, there's always a potential for cut-through, but it wasn't something to the extent that we thought it was necessary to limit, for instance, the right turns out onto Old Bethlehem Pike. Because if I understood you correctly last time, there was people coming through and then kind of jumping down along Old Bethlehem and kind of cutting through those businesses then to get out onto 309.
Where they have the sign, no through.
And I'm assuming that the parking spots will, well, maybe I'm, maybe I'm, it's a wrong assumption that there's going to be, you know, park, the curbing in there, so it's not an easy, just, you know, you can zip right through without, you'd have to wind your way through it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a relatively small property. So in fairness to Commissioner Rogers, if you really were in that big a hurry, I guess you could kind of fiddle your way through and get out there, and it's just not, it's not a nice straight shot, I guess. And I think for me, it's awkward enough that, you know, maybe it's worthwhile, because the feedback that I recall hearing is that for people that live in the area, oh no, you want to avoid that light.
Oh, yeah.
And I understand that. It just, I, I hate to say it, but I feel bad, it just hadn't come up, because it was, we were looking more at making sure that the improvement was made at the corner to put a larger radius in.
Yeah.
For anybody that does come off Line Lexington and make a right onto Old Bethlehem, that that, yeah, that that turn is a much more efficient turn.
Right.
Because it's a larger radius, they have to move a utility pole. So we wanted, we were much more focused on that, and there was quite a bit of discussion at the Planning Commission about pedestrians maybe, you know, as they come along this frontage sidewalk on Line Lexington to get over towards the bank. But because of the way the bank is set up, it's just such a huge expanse of paving that it's, it's just not really conducive to having a nice pedestrian crossing there. There's a lot of focus on that. And I don't recall, I could be wrong, but I don't recall it coming up about cut-through at the Planning Commission meeting. So not to say, again, not to say that it wouldn't happen or couldn't happen.
But it doesn't sound like it's an attractive, it's going to be an attractive, you know, the way that it's designed, it's not going to be super attractive to people to kind of cut-through. And let me, let me cut you off there for a second, Brian. The corner is going to, that improved intersection is going to be a widening, right?
Yes, so along Line Lexington, it's going to be roughly 14 feet from center.
Yep.
Right now, it's about 12. It is kind of, it wiggles a little bit, and because of the barn, it, you know, site distance certainly wasn't good. The barn's going to be gone. It will be a much straighter shot to get through there. So the area that's in gray, that's the paving widening that will take place.
That'll all take place as a part of this construction.
Yes, yes.
Did someone say there are going to be no-through traffic signs at the entrance?
There is one there, but nobody listens.
Oh, okay, people do it anyway. They can't listen to, won't hear. All right. Any questions from Commissioners, Residents? Any questions? All right. Then I think it's appropriate to resolution, right? Resolution 2504. I'll ask if there's a motion for approval of the Corner Brook Land Development Consideration, Resolution 2504. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestrako.
My microphone was off.
Oh. Any, I heard you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that resolution is approved. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming out and sharing, you know, explaining all that.
Item number two, Clemens Food Group Land Development Discussion.
Thanks, Vice President Rogers. Let me have some aerials here to provide some context as I introduce the team from Clemens, Clemens Food Group, as we all are familiar with, is expanding some of the employee parking due to some of the previous projects. And Scott Camberne, engineer for Clemens Food Group, is here tonight to give a quick overview to the board of the project. It's been through the Planning Commission and County Planning Review, and is here now for a discussion tonight. Scott.
Good evening. Scott Camberne with Erwiler and Walter. I'm here with the applicant representative, Brian Moyer, and Ken Pickett from the Clemens Food Group. Applicant is proposing to construct a 175-car employee parking area right in this location. So this is, this is the entrance of, this is Clemens Road. This is their primary employee entrance. Secondary employee entrance from Welsh Employee Footage by La La comes in through here, goes back to their primary main employee parking facility. This is adjacent to the recently constructed wastewater pretreatment plant and their existing employee parking area.
So this is an extension of the existing employee parking area that's kind of right there?
Right here, correct.
Yep. And I'm sorry, maybe it's staring me in the face, but I'm not seeing it. What's the new, what's the new area? What would be the new parking, and what's the existing parking?
Circling right now, please. The parking is right here.
Yeah, okay.
It's 175-car parking area.
Yep.
Adding on to the current 1,880, I think, parking spaces, which include cars, truck cabs, and trailers throughout the entire complex of the Clemens Food Group.
Scott, just please speak into the microphone, Scott, so people watching on video can hear you. It's all right.
Yep. So, yes, so that 1,880 existing parking spaces throughout the entire complex, which include car parking, truck cab parking, and trailer parking. This will add 175, which will put us slightly over 2,000 vehicle parking spaces in the total complex.
So is that because of increase of employees, or?
It's a logistical need. Their main human resource entry for their workers are in this, is at this location. Logistically, placing parking at other locations throughout the facility just does not work to get the people into the spot that need to be in, to come in through the front door, their front door. But yes, they are expanding internally, they are expanding lines, always looking at how to improve the food industry. Aaron, if we can go to the next plan, please? Yeah, this is, this is the grading landscape plan. We have proposed three underground detention basins, number two, number three, and there is already an existing one right here, which services this area for the wastewater pretreatment facility that was just recently completed for construction. Various landscaping is proposed around the perimeter and within a few of the islands internally. One, two, three, and four proposed light standards. Two are on the perimeter, two are within the parking facility itself. Employees will enter through the 40-foot road entrance and come into here. This is, will service no tractor trailers. It's employee only. They have, they can traverse through the aisles. There's an aisle going out into this main area, so they can make a loop. Any other questions regarding?
How much more impervious coverage are you adding?
That's a good question.
Okay. I haven't asked.
I'm going to say it's approximately, the total site LOD is 1.9 acres. The impervious coverage will be about 1.7, 1.6 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Self-contained area, so that's, this is pretty straightforward stuff.
It's all within, it's all private property. We're in receipt of the various township municipal professional review letters. They are all will comply items. We refer the Planning Commission at their last held meeting, we did have a preliminary final plan recommendation for the plan and all waivers. I can go down through the waiver requests.
No, not necessary for tonight. Tonight's for discussion, and then we'll move it for, we'll move it to our next meeting for action. But, you know, if we have any further questions about any of those, we would, we can raise them at the next, at the, you know, the night of the, when we take action, so. Any other questions, comments, Commissioners, Residents? All right, so then, two weeks?
Yes, sir.
All right, if Commissioners, if by way of consensus, we can put this on the, on our agenda for two weeks from now for action?
Great.
And if we have any other questions, obviously between then, we might reach out, but otherwise, we'll, we can save them for that evening.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Great.
This is about as straightforward as it gets.
Yeah, yeah, it seems it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there are only four waivers requested, so it's easy.
Great. All right, well, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
And thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Well, for planning and zoning, anyway. Unless you're calling it into the meeting.
We've worked on the quarter off.
That's right. That is the nudge right there. All right, Public Works Committee.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm going to defer to the Township Managers' Report when I have a few items that I'll go over at that point.
Got it. Parks and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Lestrako.
Thank you, President Zipfel. So for this spring, we have, and we have our Get Fit classes. There are lots of options, so please check out our website. And winter fitness classes are obviously coming to an end, so we're going to start March 30th with the spring session for Zumba, for Remix. We'll start that spring session, March 31st to May 12th. There's no class on April 21st, and walk-ins are always welcome for all of these classes. For yoga, that's Thursdays at 7:00 PM. So our spring session for yoga will begin April 3rd to May 8th, so mark your calendars for that. All of our classes are here at the Hatfield Township Administration Building. The prices may vary, and so again, just check our website, hatfield.org, for all of that information. And so four events coming up, I kind of mentioned Earth Day last month. And so Earth Day, our annual event, will be Saturday, April 26th. We have two collection sites, which will operate from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM that day at the Public Works Complex. That's no shredding. And then Clean Earth will also be there. We will also be hosting several cleanup sites, so if you are interested in parks, trails, open space cleaning, we always need volunteers, and you can let Ashley Brody know. Her email is A.B.R.O.U.D.Y., that's A. Brody, at hatfield.org. And we always love volunteers for Earth Day events. And then there's going to be an Earth Day workshop. That's children's Earth Day workshop. A planting table will be there. Children can plant seeds in cups to take home, and we will discuss native plants as the kids learn how to plant seeds and where to put the plants and what to do for the environment. Also, there'll be clean water toy wash, so kids can bring their toys, wash up some dirty toys, and show how what goes into water will stay there and that it needs to be cleaned. So lots of learning and great events coming up. Thank you, President Zipfel.
Okay, great. And I saw, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't our first, but I think I saw our first Facebook post about joining the pool or going to the pool, just maybe a little less than a week ago, and I thought, wow, it's that time of year already, so summertime is coming fast.
I'm stealing my thunder.
Oh. I did do it unknowingly, but, okay. Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Partha.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here you go. On February 23rd, officers took part in re-up event at the Black Reserve Book History in Lansdale. On February 21st, oh, sorry, on March 21st, officer will join some children for a PAL pal reading at the Lansdale YMCA. And on March 22nd, officer will be on hand at the North Penn Parents Special Education Alliance dance at North Penn High School. And last update is about our new police station, and chief gave us a tour, all of us, just before we started the meeting. So here's some update on the building. All is moving along. We can, we all can see is gate progress from the outside, we can see, and we're expecting that roof will be done soon, and I think next week as well. The building is sparing to the life on inside, well, as well. There will be road work going on along Cow Path Road at the entrance to the station, as well as on Orvillea Road, at the secondary access point up to the station. Improvements to this location are crucial to the traffic flow for the new building, and we have more to come. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, great. Yes, chief, thank you for the tour. We're going to jump to Finance Committee, lest I steal anyone else's thunder. Commissioner Andrus.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Zipfel. So regarding the pool, so a reminder that the early discount period for the Aquatic Center will be ending this Friday, March 14th. So please take advantage of the discounted rate if you're interested in purchasing a season pass. You can visit the hatfield.org for a link to register at the top of the homepage. Later this meeting, Aaron's going to go over a brief overview of the annual bids we do in the spring for a variety of projects. Interestingly enough, this came at the pool board meeting yesterday. One item in particular that I think is worth highlighting is how we buy chemicals for our pool. Several years ago, our staff spearheaded a creation of a consortium. A public pool is consisting of five other communities to bid and purchase supplies as a group rather than each town on its own. By working together, increasing our purchasing power, we've been able to get competitive prices even during high, times of high inflation. We'll use the same approach successfully to purchase rock salt for the roads and also working for, looking for ways to work together with other municipalities to manage our expenses. Nice work. Thank you.
That's great. Yep. All right, we're going to jump right to the Township Managers' Report. Aaron.
Thanks, Mr. President. First item I have is a consideration for the Commissioners to vote on. It is the follow-up to Mr. Pete Dorney's presentation from the last meeting regarding the 2025-26 sewer budget our authority runs on in April fiscal year. So bill, the new billing cycle will begin at the second quarter, April 1. Just as a reminder, Pete went over the proposal, which is requesting a fee increase of $1 per month. The average household residential, non-business, be a $12 increase per year. So still puts our authority well below our neighbors and well within the bottom 10th percentile of the region as far as rates go. They do a great job of managing costs.
They do, and given the number of unfunded mandates that they've gotten over the last, you know, decade or so, it, that's, he does a nice job of keeping it at $1 a month increase is pretty reasonable. So why don't I, we need to make a motion for that resolution. So is there, the chair will make the motion for Resolution 2505. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestrako. And any questions or comments?
Only the one comment, it's like, you know, how Pete is managing only this much less increase, like why we have so much love from our neighbor? And this is like impressive.
Yeah, it is impressive. He does a great job. Pete has always done a great job, and his entire staff. So, you know, publicly, we should take the opportunity to say thank you to them. I know we, as a group, we went over there not long ago, some months ago, and toward the facility, and it's just, it's a great organization. They do kind of unrecognized heroes in Hatfield here, so we appreciate all the work they do. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 2505, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would like to request Johnny Cash to be played during my update. Ray, if you don't mind. Could someone else call you in the next few minutes? A few other items for the community and for the Commissioners tonight. Commissioner Andrus mentioned the bids. It is that time of the year, another sign of spring, when we go out to bid for several items. Propane, heating oil, the chemicals for the Aquatic Center, gasoline for our vehicles, and diesel for our dump trucks. So those bids will be going out, and then they'll be in front of the Commissioners at our next meeting for consideration. In addition, our road paving program in the ramps, which this year we are partnering with Hatfield Borough, because one of our most important corridors, Cow Path, at least the portion that is not PennDOT-owned, is going to be on our list of roads to be paved now that all the, I think all of us have driven through the detour in the last few weeks, and I forget about it every day and drive right into it, and then get routed. A lot of underground work being done now, so we're in a position finally to pave that stretch with the borough, which will lead right into the Connector Road being finished and repaved. So this summer, we're going to have a really fresh corridor over there, which will be a nice public improvement. So we'll have the roads for the Commissioners to consider, most likely the April meeting because of how we're bidding those out this year, and we'll talk to our Public Works Committee about the roads. I don't, I don't want to put any road names out there until we see the prices that come in, and then we can fully commit to the roads that we're repaving this year. in and then we can fully commit to the roads that we're repaving this year.
Is there the opportunity to include the municipal authority on any of the chemicals?
That's a, that's a great question. We'll, we'll talk to Pete, see if there is some, some shared expenses that we can, we can partner on. It's a great idea. Item three, just as a reminder, the Commissioners are well aware, but for the public, every March, we recognize some outstanding women in our community who, who provide a lot of public service, volunteer service, and great contributions back to the Hatfield community. So they'll be here in two weeks to get recognized by the Commissioners, just a reminder. Next item, I have a quick video for everybody to enjoy. We have a, and it's across the street from Brian and his team over at Clemens Food Group as our park comes along. Last week, we had a nice new feature being added. The bathrooms were finally delivered. I'm going to show you the two-hour version, but we went with the minute version instead. This year, this park, we ordered modular, modular unit for our bathroom instead of how we did in school road park, less expensive, quicker, easier, built in the factory and brought over on a crane and just dropped in two pieces and connected last week. So not quite ready yet to be opened, but we're still planning on an April grand, grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony, hopefully at the end of April before our, our public meeting, that we can get out there and cut a ribbon and invite a lot of the stakeholders with us and then have turned into a parks event as we come back to our meeting. So a nice, nice feature. Yes. And we'll, we'll have cameras throughout as well to make sure everything stays safe and protected for our infrastructure and for the Garden of Health as well, for the volunteers that are out there.
It's amazing what prefab can do now.
And the one thing, is the camera will monitor from our police office, right? Camera will monitor?
It'll be, it's web-based from anywhere. Yeah, we'll be able to monitor that from anywhere.
Like I, you know, one visit chief gives me like, do you have some monitors, like, you know?
Right. On everyone's phone. Yeah. So some nice features. Playground's coming together. We're going to do final landscaping over the next month. It's going to look like a brand new park. And thanks to Clemens Food Group, a lot of the land was from Clemens Food Group from over time. All the land, really, you know, went from a half-acre park to a three-acre park to an eight-acre park and then now almost 20-acre park with 10 acres being used to raise produce to provide for low-income families. So great partnership from over the years with the Commissioners and Clemens Food Group, for sure. Also, last, last item, Commissioners, just, every spring, in the fall, we send out a newsletter to our community, an actual printed newsletter that the people, everybody gets. I have a little preview just to show Commissioners what we're doing this year. Cover is our principal. Thanks to Commissioner Lustraco for introducing us to Dr. Radigan over at AM Culp, who is doing some great work over there as an educator, and we featured some of the work that she's doing. We featured one of our local businesses, Turn 14, and the Commissioners were out there several years ago for a tour. They've since expanded and we got to get back out there for another tour. Two young guys, you probably remember, started this company not long ago, college roommates, and turned it into a really successful business. So we'll try to get back out there, but it was nice to feature them. Featuring our two new lieutenants, Jeff Boyd and Chris Graham, who just elevated last year to the, to the position, just to get to know them a little bit better for the community. Commissioners, for the first time ever, we have a kids page in our newsletter. We, we want more people to open the newsletter and learn about their community. We know that a lot of people over 60, open it, read it, put it on their fridge. We, we probably suspected some other ages toss it in the garbage without opening it. No offense to anybody over six, not that anybody is over 60 on the dais. I'm getting some weird looks. So we figured, let's add a kids feature and promote the kids feature to make sure the kids are opening it and looking through it. We have a word search with all Hatfield-themed words, including the Commissioner names. We have a crossword puzzle with all Hatfield-related trivia. And then we have a Spot the Difference page with a, a very special guest there. I'm not going to reveal who that is there in the bottom left, but you'll see when the magazine comes out, but it's a, someone that a lot of kids are going to like to see disappear in the left picture when they see him on the right. But we'll, we'll look at that when you guys get it. That'll be a surprise. In addition, just highlighting the construction project, police station, as well as a QR code where, where residents are able to, through that code, will launch you into a minute, minute-by-minute picture from the construction camera, time lapse of the, the building of the police station, as well as a, a QR code to the video of the bathroom for Clemens Park. So just some added features to hopefully make the newsletter more interesting to our community and help everybody understand what's going on. And also, I don't want to completely steal the thunder for next week, but the five women that, that we're going to be recognizing next week will be in the newsletter. The timing always doesn't work out great for that, but we were able to get them in this time and these will hit mailboxes in about six weeks. So they'll have already been recognized in this room, but then there'll be a newsletter to follow up and to, to recognize them for their great work. So good addition. Ton of thanks to Tracy Pichocki from Illustrated Designs and our in-house employee Jay Gordon. Those two work really well together and have elevated our newsletter to what it was when I was doing it, more crop art and, you know, whatever Word document had for me into what we're trying to make, something that people will save and read and use in like an actual magazine. So we're pretty proud of our improvement of that over the years.
Looks great.
Yeah. It's a great preview. I really like the, you know, the, you can see the, the link, it's not a link, but, you know, you can then see the progress, the QR code, you can, the progress of both of those construction projects. That's great.
And what's neat too is when we post this online, there's a lot of additional features for people if they want to read it online. Jay, then we'll have any interviews we have or video tours of Turn 14. You can press a link and see all the videos and the backup and extra features for people. So he's, he's doing a great job of turning it into something. So thanks for your support, Commissioners.
Incredible. Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Solicitor.
Nothing to report tonight.
All right. Good to hear. Good to hear. Citizens comments? Any citizens' comments? All right. Well, then, that brings us to the conclusion of our workshop meeting and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Partha. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.